Okay. Calling to order a special meeting of the Glendale City Council at 3:56 on April 2nd. May we have roll call, please?
Council members, Asatirian.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Brotman.
Here, and may we have a report, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on March 29th, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And we have two items today. What is our first item?
Our first item is community development regarding review of council's priorities for certain proposed amendments to GMC Chapter 30.11 Residential Districts and GMC Chapter 30.12 Commercial Districts regarding multifamily development standards and objective design standards for multifamily residential and residential mixed-use projects. A motion to provide subsequent direction on a certain proposed multifamily residential and residential mixed-use zoning amendments and objective design standards in multifamily residential and commercial zones and to proceed with finalizing the standards for presentation to the Planning Commission prior to returning to City Council for introduction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Brotman, Member of City Council, pursuant to a number of outreach meetings regarding a variety of new site planning, massing and scale, and architectural elements for multifamily standards in residential zones, as well as mixed-use development standards in commercial zones, there were a number of comments and recommendations that arose from these outreach meetings that deviate from council's previous direction, and hence staff will be seeking further feedback from council, after which they will prepare the code amendments necessary that will go in front of boards and commissions prior to coming to council for introduction and ultimately adoption. With that, I'll turn it over to Viliya Zemetitis, our Deputy Director of Long Range Planning, to present the site.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Brotman, council members, as was just stated, we are coming back to...
There we go. I'll start over again. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Brotman, and council members. As was mentioned, we are coming back to City Council to get your feedback on a number of items for our two objective design standard projects, one for multifamily residential and one for commercial zones and mixed-use standards. As noted, the two zoning updates and new objective design standards are projects on similar tracks. The first one focuses on multifamily projects in residential zones. This would be for the R3050, R2250, 1650, and our high-density residential zone, R1250. And the other deals with multifamily and residential mixed-use projects in commercial zones in the C1, C2, C3, and CH zones. Both projects are meant to help streamline regulations so that the maximum potential of residential density can be achieved while still maintaining neighborhood compatibility and resulting in articulated quality development. Moving forward, you'll see that the multifamily residential project in residential zones is referred to as the MF project, and the multifamily residential and residential mixed-use project in the commercial zones as the MU or the mixed-use project. To provide context where these new standards would apply, here's a map of the city showing the multifamily residential neighborhoods in gold and the commercial zones along the commercial corridors and centers in red. The multifamily residential project's new site planning, massing, and scale concepts were presented to council and stakeholders at the end of last year, and the actual draft code language was presented to the DRB and Local Architects Group for comment in February. The mixed-use projects code amendments were presented to council at the end of February, so you might remember quite a bit of this information for the mixed-use project. This particular slide shows council's actual direction for the two projects. For the MF project, council directed staff to proceed with refining the massing and scale concepts as presented, including interior setbacks, what's going to be called COSA, the Common Open Space Area Requirements, massing in location, standards for horizontal modulation, and vertical modulation, and then to return with the architectural detail standards and visual images. Now, for the mixed-use project, council said to continue with the elimination of the current R1250 regulations, replacing those with new standards based on the presented site planning concepts and the concepts for massing and scale and architectural elements. Note several of the key objective design standard options, and these options would be for facade articulation, roofline design, and fenestration straddle both the MF project and the MU project. Now, having heard council's direction, staff presented refined multifamily or MF regulations and objective design standards to the DRB and to a group of locally practicing architects, many of whom have frequently presented projects before the DRB and to council itself, so you do know them. Both groups fully supported eliminating the tiered wedding cake setback standards currently required by code, allowing three-story multifamily projects regardless of the lot width, and increasing lot coverage in the higher-density zones. Okay, again, both groups advocated that these updates to setbacks, height, and lot coverage are critical to increasing housing supply and incentivizing affordability. Both DRB and Architects Group, however, they had significant concerns and comments on the common open space area concept, the COSA, as well as roofline options, material and color standards, and fenestration options in the new objective design standards. Because their comments and recommendations really deviate from council's previous direction on these key topics, staff is requesting further feedback from council before continuing with both projects. Perhaps the most significant change in the residential standards, and one that pretty much garnered the most discussion, is the new common open space amenity concept. As presented to council in November of last year, this concept focuses on locating the COSA on the ground floor within the front 80% of the lot to break down the building massing and to encourage all residents to use the shared open space. Architects have the option of choosing either A, five-foot minimum, eight-foot average setback with a minimum 10% of the lot devoted to COSA, or B, a minimum six-foot interior setback, a flat setback, with a greater COSA area of 15% of the lot. Now, on lots 90 feet or less in width, the COSA would be required to have a minimum dimension of 15 feet, be located outside of any streetfront setback or interior setback, and on lots greater than 90 feet, the minimum COSA dimension would be 30 feet and outside of any required setback. COSA can also be provided within an interior courtyard, as in the previous slide, or at the front of the building, as shown on this slide. Both DRB and architects were supportive of the minimum 10% or 15% of the lot area for the COSA, depending on whichever interior setback option is chosen by the developer or architect. However, they had issues with the COSA locational requirements. They did not want to see the COSA limited at the ground floor. They didn't want to see it within, to be limited within the front 80% of the lot depth, or that it be required to be outside of any required interior setback. They felt that such standards would be too limiting to achieve density and would lead to concessions and waivers for density bonus projects. The Design Review Board and the architects instead recommended that the COSA be provided anywhere on the lot, and this would include rooftop decks, in interior setbacks, or at the rear of the lot. The interior setbacks would be counted towards the minimum COSA, is another suggestion, and they also recommended allowing the COSA to be split into two or more smaller open space area rather than just one larger open space. But that if the COSA is desired at grade by City Council, consider requiring a certain portion of the COSA be at grade on larger lots, but not on smaller lots. So staff is definitely requesting council's direction on these COSA regulations. Next up would be massing and scale modulation standards. Both the MF project and the mixed-use project, the MU project, have massing and scale objective design standards regarding these items for new projects to ensure that the new projects be compatible with existing neighborhood development and are sufficiently modulated so as you're not resulting in boxy development. These include horizontal and vertical modulation standards with recesses and projections in the building walls, and variations in height over three stories, and these were presented to City Council in November of 2023 and in February of 2024 for the respective projects. Now, facade articulation options were presented to council in February for the mixed-use project, and similar design options would also, or have been already incorporated in the draft multifamily residential project. Overall, the DRB and the local architects were comfortable with the proposed horizontal and vertical modulation requirements with minor edits and clarifications. I'll just run through these. So the next few slides show the horizontal and vertical modulation standards as presented to council and to the stakeholders groups. So first up would be the horizontal modulation standards. These were offsets or recesses required for facades greater than 40 feet in width. A suggestion was made by the architects group to increase that minimum width to perhaps 50 feet and not just 40. Next would be the multifamily horizontal modulation standards for building facades greater than 100 feet in length. This is typically on the interior lots, interior property lines, and these would require a building recess, creating a three-segment elevation. When adjacent to a single-family residential zone, multifamily projects would also be required to have an additional stepback of 10 feet above the second floor, and this would ensure compatibility and provide an appropriate transition to the adjacent single-family residential zone. And then for density bonus projects, with additional height and stories, any fourth floor would have to provide a minimum 10-foot stepback, and then also the massing would be limited to the rear half of the building. These are facade articulation modulation options were also presented to council in February and were included in the draft multifamily project standards presented to DRB and the architects group. So these modulation standards would be applied for facade segments to create visual interest and reduce the perceived massing. So as for the DRB and architects' comments, DRB felt that projects that utilize the five-foot minimum, eight-foot average interior setback requirement would already provide sufficient modulation so that only projects that utilize a six-foot minimum, so there's two options for interior setbacks, so the second option, this minimum uniform six-foot interior setback option, only those projects would need to meet the horizontal modulation standards, and staff definitely supports this recommendation. I apologize, I went too far, and I'm sorry. There you go. Comments related to vertical modulation mainly focused on allowing density bonus projects to have the massing above the third floor span across the entire building with appropriate setbacks, so not to be limited just at the rear of a multifamily residential building, and then also to allow projects on sloped lots to have a height regulated by building envelope. This is rather different from the way that we currently apply height standards with a fixed height limit. Staff, again, supports both of these recommendations, and last but not least, neither group was opposed to the various facade articulation options. However, DRB noted that the options outlined and shown in the previous slide might not account for some future design trends, and that local architects might not want to have every facade segment feature one of the facade articulation element items. So staff supports adding additional options to the menu, but does not support fully eliminating the facade articulation menu options. Both the DRB and architects' group were presented the draft objective design standards for architectural elements, and these include regulations for materials, colors, roof design, fenestration, meaning windows, balconies, awnings, and canopies, and building entries and lobbies. Recommendations from the two groups regarding roof forms, materials and colors, and fenestration, however, certainly warrant further discussion and direction from City Council. Roofline options. Standards currently outline a variety of pitched and flat roof options. Both groups felt that the proposed options, these would be the pitched roofs on top, the flat roofs on the bottom, currently do not include barrel roofs or other type of possibilities, so they recommended allowing any roof design. But they agreed with staff's suggestion that a height, a change in the height or modulation be required for flat roofs over a certain length.
Can you repeat that last statement about the flat roof?
So, they recommended not regulating roof designs whatsoever, but they did agree with staff's suggestion that in the event of a flat roof, the entire building cannot be a flat one-uniform-height flat roof, that it would be required to have some sort of modulation or height differentiation if a roof is over a certain length.
Who sets the, is the length set?
The length is not set yet, and this is just a suggestion that staff presented to the DRB and the architects' group. They were supportive of that, and that is for City Council to decide if you would like to eliminate the roofline options and just go perhaps with the possibility of regulating linear length of roofs that are flat, just to make sure that there is some modulation in the roof height. To continue, materials and colors, the proposed objective design standards also include a list of acceptable cladding materials and limit the maximum number of primary and accent materials that could be used on any exterior of multifamily and mixed-use buildings. Also, the objective design standards do not allow for neon colors to be used as the primary facade color, and also limit the number of accent colors that can be applied to building exteriors. Accent colors referring to window trim, fascia boards, and whatnot. So, the Designer Review Board and local architects were, again, concerned about constraining creativity when it comes to exterior building materials and colors. After much discussion, the DRB recommended only identifying prohibited building materials rather than allowable building materials. Also, after discussing several approaches, the local architects ultimately advocated for no restrictions on exterior materials, so that would be not limiting materials whatsoever, and this would include EFIS, which is a cheaper form of synthetic stucco that staff had suggested be limited to 50% of a building facade. Staff ultimately supports the DRB's recommendation of a list of prohibited materials, which that would allow for any type of future possible materials that might be developed that are not available at this time, but staff does also, does not support eliminating the material requirements altogether, and especially not on the EFIS. So, terms of color, both the DRB and the local architects did not see the need to restrict colors at all. However, at our last City Council meeting at the end of February, City Council commented on the potential need to regulate color, so we are at a crossroads there. So the proposed elimination of material and colors necessitates further discussion, and staff is seeking additional direction from council. Next, the fenestration options, also generated considerable conversation by the DRB and the architects' group. The fenestration menu options for the multifamily project are shown on this slide and are very similar to the mixed-use project fenestration options that were presented to City Council in February. DRB did not object to the different fenestration options presented, though they did ask for additional shapes of windows to be considered. So if you wanted to propose portholes around windows or windows with arches, those should be included as well, and staff supports this. On the other hand, the local architects felt that the fenestration elements should not be regulated at all, and this would be to allow absolute flexibility and creativity for architects and designers. They believe that the modulation and articulation requirements will provide enough design interest, and that the building code already somewhat regulates window sizes based on bedroom egress. Staff appreciates the points that the architects are making, but also feels additional consideration is needed before all fenestration requirements are removed from the objective design standards. Such elimination could result in multifamily mixed-use buildings with blank, street-facing elevations, or windows with no placement pattern or rhythm, if these were to be eliminated. Again, staff is seeking direction from the City Council as to whether it is acceptable to eliminate fenestration designs options. I'm not sure if council was able to watch the Design Review Board. I know several council members were. We appreciate that. If you tuned in, there was over a three-hour discussion with the Designer Review Board on all of these objective design standards for the multifamily residential project alone. So it was very, very deep and thoughtful, and ultimately, you know, we understood the Designer Review Board and the architects worried that the objective design standards might be too restrictive and hence limiting their creativity. They were also concerned that the menu options would be piecemeal in terms of its approach to design rather than promoting a holistic architectural design process. Staff acknowledges this and shares some of their concerns, but given the recent state regulations and the stated concerns of the council and the community regarding boxy, bland development with lower-quality materials, it seems minimum design standards would help prevent this type of construction, and these are needed. The objective design standards have been crafted aiming to provide enough site planning, massing, and scale, and architectural detail options for architects and designers to execute their own creative vision. So, which brings us to this point. Considering the concerns raised by the Designer Review Board and the architects' group, staff is now requesting council for further direction. We have two slides. We've sort of outlined the items that we are requesting direction from you. First slide deals with the COSA, the Common Open Space Area, amenity area, and the question to you. Should the proposed COSA requirements be implemented as currently drafted, basically essentially compelling development of courtyard-style projects, or should some of the regulations be modified? And these regulations are whether to allow COSA on rooftops or otherwise above the ground floor, do we allow it COSA at the rear of the lot, or allow COSA width to include interior setbacks, or allow COSA to be split into more than one open space area?
Okay.
I mean, you want us to go through these one by one?
If you'd like to comment, you're welcome to one by one or combined. I think that this is also an overreaching discussion because you're, essentially you're commenting, do we implement a COSA?
Right, okay.
Or not?
Let's do this. Let's have Alan Durham is our only speaker. Is that right? Anybody on the phone? Let's have Alan Durham speak, and then we'll figure out how we want to organize this.
Exactly, and we do have two slides. So the first one is on COSA, and the second one is on the four other aspects, which would be the roofline design, colors and materials, and fenestration options, so.
Please.
Mayor Brotman, members of the council, planning staff, thank you for letting me speak. Three minutes is not enough to address all these individual issues, so my comments have to be more general. It's vital for the City Council to get these objective design standards right, because as long as multifamily residential design meets whatever the ODS are going to be, there can't be any design review whatsoever. You're going to be stuck with whatever you get. The laxer these design standards are, the higher probability that Glendale will see poor designs of new multifamily projects in the future. Objective design standards need careful, thorough, and detailed analysis by the City Council. Residents don't want to hear in the future about, quote, "unintended consequences," quote, as we commonly hear from council. So far, Glendale's consideration of objective design standards appears to be totally insular. Are we considering what other cities are doing? Pasadena is currently developing their own standards. Pasadena and its consultant have so far conducted a series of workshops, including two study sessions and a walking tour, all of which were open to the public. Where is our consultant, Crandall and Arambula, missing in action? To my knowledge, they weren't at the prior City Council meeting. They weren't at the Design Review Board. They aren't here today. We don't hear from them. They're not here to answer questions. Where are they? They're supposed to be urban planners and architectural experts. The only outreach I can see at this point in Glendale has been to local developers and architects, never to residents. The recent meeting consisted of only six local architects. All of their comments were to lessen the previously proposed objective design standards, which weren't even completely fleshed out, in my opinion. They claimed that objective design standards, as proposed, would limit their creativity. This is nonsense. We're not talking about Frank Gehry here. These architects are hired by developers generally who want to minimize cost and therefore minimize architectural detail and design. Creation of objective design standards are a crucial component of good urban planning. The council needs to consider these standards in a broader context. Why aren't we even hearing from our paid consultants who claim to be urban planning experts? If the City Council intends to consider watered-down, proposed, objective design standards, it should request our consultant to create illustrations of the most massive and nondescript designs possible under those standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Before we begin talking about the details, could you just explain what the process is going to be as far as engaging the general public, the residents, neighborhood associations, homeowners associations, other people that tend to weigh in on design? How's that going to look? And it's a good question. What role is Crandall-Arambula going to play in all that?
Mayor Brotman, council members.
Crandall-Arambula was the consultant on this particular project. They were the ones that actually prepared the diagrams that you saw in the slideshow and in previous presentations. The courtyard concept, the COSA, the Common Open Space Amenity, is essentially their vision of what they would like to see in the Glendale residential high-density neighborhoods. So it is their production in terms of the actual development standards, most of what you see today. They were under contract until December of this year, and so they are supporting staff, and they've always supported staff in terms of essentially drafting the standards. Staff is working essentially to ensure that the standards fit within our existing zoning code. So I don't know if Mr. Bradley Calvert has something to add to that. I'm not sure if that, does that...
Well, it sounds like a back-office role, basically. They're not part of the outreach process.
They are not part of the outreach process. Now, in terms of the outreach process itself, we've had public hearings. All of those have been noticed. We are going to continue having public hearings, both before the Designer Review Board, the Planning Commission, and City Council. We are going to be working also with our CDD Instagram, so to get the word out, it will be identified on our cities, on our planning division's website. We have already met with several community groups. We've extended offers to meet with all of the various membership as well. Our list for the local practicing architects were essentially any, you know, most of the practicing architects that you see before any previous multifamily residential project that we've had in the city. We've extended that list not only to the Glendale architects, but to other architects who have worked on successful projects. These are projects that the council has been very supportive of, such as the one that's behind the hotel on Central, which is eluding me right now, I believe. So we've extended that, and the ones that came were the ones that... So we've extended that and the ones that came were the ones that were available and participated in this feedback group.
So you say you met with community groups. What were the nature of those meetings? Because I know you sat down with these architects and we're hearing now the feedback from the architect. Why aren't we hearing the feedback from the community groups in a similar way?
We actually met with the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. We offered to meet with any of the different homeowners coordinating council participants, the homeowners groups. We have also contacted, I believe, and I saw that our apartment, not Abundant Housing, it's the.
Abundant Housing LA?
Not Abundant Housing LA. It's the one that is our local housing.
I believe you're referring to the apartment association.
Yes. Correct. So we have made extensive outreach for groups to try to get them engaged in actually working and developing on this.
But what were their, why are we not hearing, we're hearing the architects' input. Why are we not hearing that input? Where is it?
The info from the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council at that time was mostly in terms of conceptual projects, the same concepts that city council did. So they came back. What we heard primarily is that we want to make sure that it's compatible with the adjacent development patterns. These would be appropriate stepbacks at the rear, appropriate transitions between neighborhoods. They had great concerns with regards to multifamily residential south of Foothill because of the change in grade. How are those housing units going to be addressed? And so some of these comments have already been addressed in the actual proposed draft standards. We've addressed transitional stepbacks and setbacks for single-family and multifamily residential zones. We're proposing to have a building envelope for sloped lots, to have appropriate transitions and building massing forms adjacent to single-family residential projects that are south or on a lower scale. So we are actually addressing these concerns in tandem. We will be going out to these groups as well, but at this point, we're at a crossroad and we need to know what council wants to direct us to do. Do we want to look at COSA? If we don't want to look at COSA, we need to identify that now. If council does not wish to see any fenestration options, then we need to go forward. I mean, we have to provide these, we've provided these groups something to comment on. We're getting their comments and we're coming back to you to say, how does council wish to proceed? And that is where we're at.
And I'll shut up in a minute and let my colleagues talk.
Of course.
But I just, I'm concerned that we're only hearing certain voices. We're not hearing input that you've gotten by sitting down with community groups. It's not in this presentation. I just, so I'm feeling that there's a bias coming through.
Mayor Brotman, if I may, the last presentation, we had provided the update of the groups that we went to and the feedback that we heard. From there, they went to the professional groups to get their feedback to further refine, which whereas we found there was a conflict with the priorities that council had identified and some of the comments that you had identified as well. For us to go back to any additional groups, we would like to resolve that conflict here today to make sure that we're moving forward with these large pieces that things like common open space, things like modulation are going to significantly impact every other thing that we're going to discuss with the public. So we've had those initial discussions with both groups. We've also had that discussion with council. We need to resolve these before we can go back and have any more conversations with anyone else because this could all change depending on what you say today.
Okay.
Well, I think Mr. Calvert addressed what I was going to say because I was under the impression, based off of the briefing, that you're coming to us today not because this process is done and you're not going to continue, but because there's a conflict and before you put in time and resources in moving forward, you want our feedback. So I actually like this process better because I feel like, you know, sometimes we go off and we're way down the line and then you have put in all this time and effort and resources and then you come back at the end of that journey and it hasn't given us the opportunity to give feedback during that process. So I would like to see that moving forward with community outreach, that we are actually having conversations with Abundant Housing LA and some of the other groups. I think the Glendale tenants' union would also be worthwhile because, is that the one that you were trying to?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just because I think that just getting feedback from community members who actually live in multifamily units and that would be impacted, I think would be helpful to get their feedback on some of the amenities that tend to be missing in multifamily buildings and so forth. So kind of want to kick off with that. I know, I think it would be worthwhile if we went like, you know, as a group, item by item to give.
Yeah, we could do that. I just wanted to see if anybody else had any kind of high-level comments to make about the process. Any others or can we move on?
We can move on.
Okay. So we'll move on. So you, maybe we'll talk about the COSA first. Okay. So let's just go across the daisies and see what comments on this.
I'm fine with COSAs being on rooftops. It seems to be a trend that's growing in terms of open space and amenity space. So it's not something I'm completely stuck on for it to be simply in areas where we've been accustomed to seeing them.
Okay. Any comments on these other points about whether it's in the front or the back?
I think it all depends on the site. I don't know what, ultimately, we have to look at what the purpose of that space is and how it engages with the general public. I feel somewhat, anything I say is just based on my own personal preference. It's not rooted in any type of research as to how those spaces engage or have been utilized in the communities. You know, the only thing I would say is that we definitely are blessed with a lot of sunshine in Southern California and anything that can take advantage of that and help tenants and the community utilize it, whether it's on a rooftop deck. I certainly think we could do more with rooftop decks in our city. I think it's worthwhile to explore. But in terms of whether it's in the rear of the lot or, you know, the interior setbacks, I don't know. I am not an architect. I'm not a designer. I don't know how, what, I'm concerned about how my comments would necessarily impact a proposed housing element.
Okay. Councilmember Devine.
Okay.
Ready to go.
I'm ready to go. First of all, sorry, here goes my voice. I'd like to see us implement the COSA standards as proposed. I think we, I think courtyard projects would be great in our city. Absolutely no splitting, more than one open space area because that's going to take us back to the day when on the side of a building, there was a little strip of green space and that was counted in their open space. And that was ridiculous and I fought that to the nth degree and I don't want to see that happen again. Courtyards on the rooftop.
COSA.
COSA on the rooftops, okay, but not like second-floor rooftop because then that would be enough space. But I do like the courtyard projects. Is there a problem?
Clarify something?
Yes. Councilmember Devine, when you say you'd like to move forward with the COSA as proposed, the proposal at this point in time would be the COSA on the ground floor. So if you're, if you are supporting rooftop, I mean, do you mean that on, above and beyond what is provided on the ground floor? Or do you mean?
Well, that would be great. That would be great. But no, I do want to see the courtyards on the ground floor.
Mayor and councilmember, if I can offer a little clarification and particularly after your comments or councilmember Stockin, this really is, do you want to allow it on the rooftop, which means most likely you will not get it at the ground level? Because the amount that's going to be created. So the intent behind putting it at the ground level, requiring it at the ground level to help break up that mass in some capacity or another. So if you're saying yes to it on the rooftop, do expect that you're not going to see it at the ground level. If your priority is to have it at the ground level and see that building broken up, to have a courtyard-style building, then my recommendation would be to move forward with the proposal as is. Otherwise, if you say yes to rooftop, that it's allowable?
It's either or.
It's going to be easier out because you're going to be able to fill the entire lot at that point.
Can I ask a question for clarification? So there was a project that prior councils had approved. It was an ACE 121 project that has a playground within the interior courtyard, which I don't believe is on the ground level, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's elevated. Where would that fit into something like this?
It's a little bit of a different situation. It's a much larger lot.
That one in particular, councilmember Stockin, that one is actually under the DSP standards. So right now, multi, so multifamily regulations right now are only for multifamily residential zones. So that was a DSP project. That court, and I do know that children's playground, which is wonderful, that is on an elevated podium, third or fourth floor, accessible right in the center to all units. That would not be consistent if it was in a multifamily residential zone with these particular standards as they are proposed right now.
So I guess my question would be, how do you give flexibility for something like that to individuals who want to develop something as an amenity for families and others? And I know that may go, it may contradict individuals who may not want to have children playing in a courtyard area, but, you know, I think a lot of families have grown up playing in those types of courtyards, myself included, when my family was renting in the early days of Glendale. And I think that there's something to be said, especially in those areas where we're building more because we are required by the state to do more and we don't have the access to the open spaces for individuals. So I would ask staff, what is it that I would like, what can I ask for that would allow for some flexibility? And that's what my intent is also partially with the rooftop. You know, we're challenging both developers, ourselves, to provide more housing, to comply with state regulations, to provide density bonuses, but we also want to be able to balance that with open space for individuals, both living in the apartments and the surrounding areas.
I believe the only way you could accomplish that is by splitting up the space. What I would say is I would have some trepidation in using that as the basis to change policy. If we look at Lexon Orange, Nexton Lex, Onyx, Harrison, those do not provide playgrounds. They had a lot more room to work with, a lot more room to play with. They have pools, they have other amenities, but it really is more of a philosophical question. Do you want to see that ground level broken up? And it would go back to, I think, your prior point, councilmember Devine, whether or not you want to break that space up. That is an option, but I would say that that isn't an amenity that we've seen built very often.
And it's not just specific to playgrounds because the projects that you just mentioned, they have adult playgrounds, right? They have outdoor grills, they have the swimming pool, they have like ping-pong tables. I think that concept, there's value to it for our residents.
Which all of those can still be achieved at ground level. They can be achieved at a podium. For the most part, you can put those on a rooftop as well. So it's about where you would like to see those placed. If you do split, then know that that's just going to reduce the amount at the ground level. Again, part of the intent with the ground level was to break up massing. If that is not as big of a priority, then we can switch directions, obviously. That's the point of the additional questions here.
So I have a question. Won't the rooftop COSA interfere with solar panels? Yes, it would. How about that? I'm not for that.
I hadn't thought of that.
I'm not for that. I would prefer the standards as proposed with the ground floor.
Okay. Councilmember Sotrin? Specific on this?
How does this impact the landscape in the front of the building? And I know this is kind of a conversation we had at staff briefing, but, you know, I think I'm trying to figure out a way that we have a lot more green space, just public use, green space. And, you know, I made a comment even about my neighborhood, where the buildings tend to be older and so a lot of the lots actually have a lot of this green space in the front where community members actually use. You know, a couple of buildings up from mine is what we refer to our like local dog park because everybody around that street gathers there because it's a large, a pretty large green lot. So if it's not, these don't necessarily, first of all, they're not open to the public. It's for the residents specifically, correct? Is there a way for us to, in between buildings, incorporate green spaces in residential? Even though, you know, especially if they're not attached to each other, if there is space in between buildings?
Councilmember Sotrin, so the front yard setback, which you would see on any high-density residential street in Glendale, such as by Stalker, Doran, Dryden, Kenwood, our local high-density residential, our 1250 standards, they will still be featuring landscaped streetfront setbacks. That requirement is not going away. They still have to have at least a 20-foot minimum setback along the street that has to be landscaped and we are going to propose additional trees for shade. The interior side setbacks can be landscaped. Sometimes they are with walkways, they will have planters. We typically do not see other property, because of the development pattern, you have lot-to-lot development and so you have lot-to-lot multifamily residential buildings. We do not see publicly accessible open space within interior setbacks in these traditional high-density residential zones. We do have publicly accessible open space requirements in the downtown and in Tropico, which we feel that that is, you know, necessary because you are already having this high-density development. You need places to congregate and that could be accessible. I would need to double check, but most likely, you know, you're not going to have your neighbor want, you know, one property owner wanting to have the rest of the neighborhood, which I think it's wonderful that that one lot in your neighborhood is allowing people and dogs to congregate, but I can't imagine it having it be some sort of easement type which allows you to have, you know, a public access easement that you're going to allow the public onto private property when your lot is already 50 feet by 150 feet deep. So I'm not sure. Hopefully that addresses your question.
Is there an opportunity for the rooftops to coexist, like, design-wise, for that to coexist if we allow for rooftops to coexist with solar?
I would imagine that a portion of the roof can be solar and a portion of the roof can be like a common rooftop deck. It really depends also on the building code standards because I think anytime you have a rooftop deck that's over 750 square feet, you have to have two means of access. So I mean, it becomes this, you know, these layers upon layers of regulations, not only from planning, but then also from the building and safety folks.
Okay. Well, so I think I'm not, definitely not wanting to split. I'm open to having it on the rooftop as long as there's an option for solar. And I know that this process was supposed to really make things more streamlined and easier and so I'm looking for guidance from staff to say, these things you're proposing are actually going to make it more difficult or layered, right? So.
Councilmember Sotrin, and speaking to the splitting, perhaps this might be a consideration for the larger, wider lots because I think that there is more room and more potential to actually have both a rooftop deck and an open space area on the ground floor. I'm not sure whether that splitting would work on a 50 by 150-foot, square-foot lot. So on the narrower lots, and we've already had this distinction in code based on the 90-foot limit because that sort of regulates our density standards, if we were to then move forward, well, if you have a lot that's greater than 90 feet, perhaps you can split it then if you have a specific set limit of square footage on the ground floor. I'm not sure if council might be amenable to that particular splitting if it's a larger development, which might have the potential to do so, both rooftop and on the ground floor. I think I would be open to that.
I would be amenable to that, amenable, yeah.
And, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to give my comments on the COSA. So, and I guess partly it's question, you know, the way you presented it to us originally came out of your work with Crandall-Arambula. There was a reason for it. It was well thought through. I don't see a reason to change that, although I, so I'm kind of with sticking to the plan as a starting point, but I like the idea, if it's a very large lot, maybe we can make a certain amount be rooftop as long as the part that's ground floor, open space, is still a substantial square footage. So that's where I would be in. But then I would, I just want to ask about this planting thing, the planters, because I think that was something Chris Welch brought up because I watched the DRB meeting. What was, what's the story there? What's the question?
Mayor Brotman, the issue comes from our current open space standards, which point to having a combination of planters and at-grade. which point to having a combination of planters and at-grade landscaping. So they don't want a common open space, just having planters and whatnot. When you have common open space landscaping that's at-grade, unfortunately, you have to have a depression in the podium deck. And that is, again, a structural issue. You know, it has ramifications in terms of, you know, construction and engineering. I know both groups said that they would like to not have this at-grade landscaping requirement. They would like to provide some sort of, you know, or to have landscaping either within landscape planters or within large, large pots. That is something that, you know, is up to the city council.
Can we split the difference on that? Can we make it okay for just, but limit it to a very small percentage or something like that?
We could, Mayor Brotman, I would hesitate to have it at-grade on a rooftop. Because I think that that's going to create way too many issues structurally to require at-grade landscaping. If you do it on a podium deck, again, it's much easier when you do depressions on the interior sides because those are typically above a parking garage, where you can depress it into the parking garage. But again, there are issues that come about. Planters themselves, I should point out that the streetfront setback is always at-grade. So you do have at-grade landscaping, it's at the streetfront setback.
Except, Mr. Calvert, except at the one development, and I can't remember which one it is, that has never put in their at-street landscaping. And I've asked you to look into that. I can't remember if it's the Lex, is it the Lex?
I know that there were some street tree questions there. They didn't have any at-grade landscaping.
Actually landscaping around the building.
They do have planters. What I would actually say to that is, aside from the front setback, because there's a little more flexibility, is the rest of it to be flexible and allow for the planters, but integrated into the design, not a physical object dropping in the ground, but it's concrete embedded, you know, built into the existing pavement, whatever it may be. I think your cost benefit of depressing that for a small amount of planting is probably not going to be worth it. It's probably going to run into a lot of resistance as well. But if it's something that's integrated into the design, I think that's fine. To the point about the project you were asking, I mean, that was one of those cases where I think at that time, because of the code, it is allowed for them to place large planters on the site. Rather than having like at Lexon Orange, it's concrete, and it's built into the pavement, and it's a fixed object, it's not something you could lift offsite, if you will. So I think that would probably be a more practical way to go, especially if we are going to allow for at-grade landscaping at the front setback.
Well, as long as the at-grade plannings in COSA areas or planters only are okay. That's the key word, "only," and that's an absolute no for me.
Okay, so on COSA, I think we've all spoken, I think you've heard general sentiment towards maintaining the current or the original recommendation, except on large lots. And then this thing on the planters was kind of over my head. So whatever Councilmember Devine said, I'm okay with.
Thank you. Mayor Brotman, just to clarify, I think I either misheard you or we are going to allow for splitting of COSA on the larger lots, but that we would allow for rooftop decks instead of having COSA at-grade for the narrower lots?
No, I don't think we're saying that.
No, you're saying the opposite. So you're saying you would like to see the COSA on the smaller lots, or on the narrower lots, and that for the larger lots, you're going to allow for the splitting.
We're willing to allow some to go to the rooftop, as long as it's not too much, I think is what I'm hearing.
As long as the patio, what are you, not patio, what are you calling it? The courtyard is substantial and does, you know, divide the mass and scale.
And we do have that limit of the minimum width of 30 feet for the larger COSA lot, you know, for the larger lots.
Okay, so that's COSA.
Okay.
Hopefully the other ones will be quicker.
And we will allow for the interior setback to be counted towards the COSA?
Was that the original?
That was not one of, it was going to be outside of the interior setback, so.
I don't understand what the implications are.
I believe from the original direction, you want to keep things as-is for the smaller sites. Split it into large sites, at that point, we can go on to the next topic there.
So, roof forms. Allow for any roof design, but require a change in modulation for flat roofs over a certain length? Or keep the options as proposed, and then also include the barrel roof?
Exactly.
I'm with Councilmember Devine.
You can give them more options, but to have a flat roof, absolutely not. So no change in modulation for flat roofs over a certain length?
I would say you have kind of two options here. Is what was presented before, you were given a series of options, and there's a request to add in a different one, consider a barrel vault. There may be other alternatives we're not thinking of. Or I would say, to your point, Councilmember Satrian earlier, if we want to make this simpler, it's that there can be a flat roof, there has to be some sort of significant change in height. Councilmember Devine, you should be familiar with, from that, actually, Councilmember DeGioian as well, the DSP is that we can come up with some dimensional standards, so this is as far as you can run on a flat roof before you have to make that change. And it's still going to include most of the options you saw in there, without us getting so prescriptive that it, we're saying a barrel vault or whatever, maybe.
So you support that concept?
I think it would be cleaner and it'd be easier to do it that way. I think it's less of a kit of parts, as we've heard in some comments as well. We're providing open-ended here. At that point, if somebody did us an angled roof, then clearly it's not flat, so they have a change in height. So I think it leaves it open-ended enough, but we have the guidance to not end up with basically a bunch of buildings that had a haircut at 55 feet.
Okay, great, okay, that's all I'm asking.
Materials?
So materials. Do we want to have a list of prohibited materials or eliminate regulations altogether?
No. I'm for listing only prohibited materials rather than permitting. I mean, you make the decision, we have it in the code. What colors, what materials prohibit the less expensive materials, et cetera. So I'm going along with your recommendations.
Yeah, I think you said, again, DRB's suggestion, which you support, was to eliminate the, what's the word?
EIF?
No, no, eliminate identifying allowed materials and just have non-allowed materials. I'm okay with that.
That's fine.
You're okay? Okay.
And we're doing the same thing with the colors, right?
Well, that's our next point. So before we move on to colors, in terms of EFS, any comment?
We support, I mean, I support, I shouldn't speak for.
Limit it to 50% of the building elevations? Is that what you guys?
No, no.
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, it's a synthetic material, it is commonly used. The consequence of prohibiting that would be increased housing costs. I would put that caveat in there. I don't think prohibiting it is necessary, it's prohibitive in certain places. As we had discussed in some of the briefings, street level, first 40 feet, minimum 50% or maximum 50% on a street-facing facade, something that doesn't end up, so we have an entire wall of just that material. We know it's a low-quality material, you can go take a look at any downtown building and see that. We limit it, and we don't put it on a street, or essentially at the pedestrian level. We can come up with a number similar to downtown, similar percentage that way, and then we can leave it from that point on.
You're against, what, EFS at all?
Yeah, I'm against, yeah, I'm against synthetic stucco, and I'm against the EIFs. They are less expensive, I think if they're going to build, do it right. So I don't support.
Even limiting it to?
I don't support that either, no. That's just me.
What are the implications of saying no EFS altogether? You're saying it's a cost.
I do see, you'll see increased costs in construction. Because you're now raising the bar on materials, so I do think we would probably hear some feedback from more pro-housing groups, if you will. I would recommend just limiting it.
I would support limiting it.
I'm okay with that.
Limiting it.
Okay. I think, look, I think staff knows what we're looking for here, more of a clean process. We all support affordable housing and trying to get more housing up, so.
Yeah.
Colors?
Regulate.
I believe that both the DRB and the architect said not to, right? Okay, let's, I would go with, there seems to be a consensus from both of them to not regulate.
Do you want it?
To not regulate? We're going to have another green building, huh?
Mayor Brotman, Councilmembers, Satrian, so we were given direction.
Councilmember Kusakian, weren't you the one that didn't like the green building, the green and orange?
Green, orange, yellow, shopping.
Correct. And so that's why we're here, because we were given direction at the mixed-use project presentation to regulate colors, and now this would be a deviation from that. So we just need clear direction for both projects.
I think the one exception that they made was these neon colors being limited, right?
Correct.
Okay, I would go with their recommendation. I mean, I think that solves what we have an issue with to begin with, no?
I suppose. I mean, again, I'm not a design expert, and the folks on design review are, so I would defer to them.
Okay, I'll go along.
Yeah, I'm okay. So we're saying no neon, but we're saying everything else is okay, as long as there's some, are we saying anything about, like, variety? Because you said, we don't want a building that's all white, what was?
Mayor Brotman, Councilmembers, I think if you have that percentage limitation on certain materials, you're going to see a deviation in materials anyways, and you're going to natural deviation in colors as well. I would say just limit, say, in the neon color to a trim. I think that's what the DRB had stated, and that would cover everything you need.
The report says neon, prohibiting neon as primary facade color, so.
Okay.
That's exactly.
Okay.
Great.
And then fenestration, right?
Yes.
What do we think about that?
I say, do not eliminate. We'll get back to the boring buildings again, and that's what we're trying to fight. We want buildings that are well-designed, there's matriculation, articulation, what are all the other words, Bradley, that I've learned from you?
It's going to show up in video later on this week for you, Councilmember Devine. What I would say is, those are diagrams. I think people got a little bit hung up on those. They don't have to be rectangles, they don't have to be squares. We heard feedback about portal windows, we can still do those, we can still allow those. You see triangulation on some of them. My recommendation, keep it, and we can just make sure that it's script enough to say that other shapes are allowed as well.
I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with that as well.
So we covered everything?
Yes.
Can I just, just one thing, which was a comment that Mr. Durham made at the DRB meeting. He didn't make it today, but it was about that, the book, what do you call it? The, you know, the guide that has all the images? What's the term that we use for that?
I believe the term he used was Mr. Potato Head.
No, 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 I'm talking about our, the document that we're going to provide.
The pattern book.
Pattern book, that was the word, okay. Pattern book. His comment was that the pattern book shows a lot of kind of existing examples, and could we also think about, like, what is possible and kind of have our own little renderings that aren't necessarily something we found in the wild, but something that we think is a nice feature? Can we incorporate that comment? Because I thought that was very useful.
I think we can look at tailoring those kind of things. And actually, if I make a recommendation even to Mr. Durham, if you want a good example, is go look at Louisiana Speaks' pattern book. Does a good job of mixing together both existing conditions, as well as those that are desired and maybe not have been seen yet in the area. Does a very good job of piecing together all those different possibilities.
We support us doing that, no objection. Okay, anything else, or we good?
That is it.
We very much appreciate your feedback, thank you.
Do we need a motion to, what is it, a motion for, to provide direction? Okay. Is there a motion that can, how do we even word this? We gave so many different suggestions and.
We will be.
What's that?
We will be summarizing your suggestions, I believe.
Okay.
Yes, Julie?
So we'll just.
I'll make the motion with the recommended recommendations from council.
Okay, that's the way to do it. Okay, very good, thank you. So motion of a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Satrian? Yes. Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Nadarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And our next item, hopefully we can do this one quickly.
Our next item is community development regarding consideration of processes to lease city-owned property. A motion to provide direction to staff regarding the preparation of resolutions with findings to support surplus land act exemptions for certain city-owned property, and direction to commence preparation of requests or proposals for the possible future disposition and/or development of property the State Department of Housing and Community Development has found exempt from the surplus land act.
Okay. Can we do a truncated version of the presentation? I'm pretty sure we've all seen it.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I probably can't make it too much more truncated. It should only take a handful of minutes. Per your direction late last year, you had asked us to look into some considerations for zoning changes through our land use element, but also just in general, looking at our existing city-owned parking lots and to consider them for development for multifamily housing. Here's a map showing all of those locations. We've identified somewhere between about 11 and 13 that could be developed. So these, as mentioned in the intro, part of the surplus land act. We have two routes here, we could put these out for an RFP. We have to follow a very prescriptive process from HCD. It will create some limitation on what could happen on those sites. Or we can declare them as exempt. That can be done in two different ways. But it gives us flexibility in the amenities that council may want to see from these and the community benefit, or in, say, the case of trying to replace parking on some of those sites. And it'll also allow us to select a proposal that probably best matches the council and the community's interests and priorities. And to become exempt, either has to be a half acre or less, or it has to be a site that's between 1 and 10 acres and can provide 300 units at 25% affordability. That can be combined across multiple sites, potentially. But what we have to do in order to move towards this exemption is to submit findings to HCD to declare that and demonstrate those. And what we're asking for today is, on this map, you see that there are four sites that are highlighted. Granted, I said 11 to 13 of these could be eligible. We would like to move forward with putting together the findings for the exemption so that we can start drafting RFPs to consider these sites for development, which would be, again, part of the, a key component to generating revenue. That's where that discussion originally came up. So what we would like to do, and permission from council, a direction from council, is to start drafting the findings. We can start working on our RFPs, and we would have to return back to council with this so that council could then declare that these sites are available surplus land. We would then submit those findings, come back to council with the RFPs to make sure that we are asking for the right things, the kind of programmatic elements, you will, similar to what we did for the Pioneer site, the Affordable Housing Project. We were very kind of prescriptive in programming. So that's the direction that we're looking for. I hope that was concise and clear enough.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to begin developing findings for our four properties and begin drafting RFPs.
We have a second? Oh, we have a comment, okay.
We have a public comment.
Well, let's just get a second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we'll have the comment before we vote, Mr. Durham.
Thank you for letting me speak. It's really more of a question, not a comment. But I noticed that the first four suggested parcels are all parking lots, Lot 2 and 4 downtown off of Maryland. For instance, those are heavily-used lots. Usually I can't get a parking space in one of them. And they service the Restaurants Along brand in particular. And I don't know if, you know, future projects that take away those parking lots would include additional public parking as part of the project or just eliminate that public parking. And, you know, I don't know how the businesses would feel about it. Another one's up in Montrose, Lot 3, similar situation, right behind the shopping park. So it's just a question of, are we giving up all the parking? Because some of the businesses, I think, would definitely be impacted. I think it might put the Limley Theaters on Maryland out of business if that parking lot was gone across the street. Because there's nothing else very close. Thank you.
You want to address that real quick?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmembers, that's also one of the reasons to try to go down this route. That's one of those things that we could build into that RFP and we would like someone to replace that parking, whatever that need may be in that location. So it's a little early to tell whether or not what that end result will be, but this will also give us that flexibility to ask for that as, say, one of those trade-offs. One thing I'll add to, the reason why we only selected four sites, these are the ones we received the most inquiry from, just for staffing purposes, council, community, overwhelming. We don't want to start moving too fast, too forward with too many of these.
Well, I would agree that we don't want to move too fast, too quickly because, you know, unfortunately, we saw what happened with redevelopment when the state political winds shifted. We lost out on a number of potential opportunities, both for revenue for the city as well as transforming certain neighborhoods and areas to our liking as a community. So I would definitely be in favor of replacing any parking that would potentially be lost. And it's fine for us to just consider and throw these out there. I think it's just looking and showing some curiosity as to what can be done with them. But I'm not going to finitely commit myself to the development of anything just yet.
Okay, and I don't think that's what we're doing.
Sure.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Zasadrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Brotman?
Yes. And the motion to adjourn?
So, moved. Second.
Okay, we're adjourned at 5:06 PM.
Do we have closed session?
We have closed session.
What? Oh, we do?
Yep.
All right. Are we on? Okay, calling in, calling to the Glendale City Council for closed session at 5:07 PM on April 2nd. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Zasadrian?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kassakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Brotman?
Here. And may we have your report, please?
Closed session, item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraphs D2 and E3 of Government Code Section 54956.91, potential case.
Okay, do we anticipate reporting out on this item?